The amount of equipment we will send to the amount of equipment that they have. Let's just say they have a CF industry explosion, a terror explosion again on their side. Let's say something horrible happens. So we could tax all of our resources. What do you have on right now? How many ambulances?
Right now, we've got three on duty and we're.
And so you're going to be sending them and calling in people from overtime.
No, not necessarily. Basically, if we have the resources available, because if they have an immediate need like that, they need staff right away. So.
No, I know.
We'd be triaging however many we could potentially send without decreasing our ability to.
But in one of those major ones, we're sending, we're going to be calling people in. It happened at Tera, it happened at Flight 232.
Potentially, yeah.
It will, and we should. But my problem is it's unfair because the most they're ever going to send is one or two or whatever they have. Because you have the capability of how many ambulances have you?
We have the capability of eight if we put all of the sideline rigs on duty, but that decreases the fire response as well if we do that.
I, yeah.
Because four of those are.
I just don't like them, they don't, you don't spell out how much equipment you're going to send. That's.
It does indicate that we will send one paramedic for emergent patients responding rigs.
Let me tell you what, whatever that says, it doesn't mean being.
Unless there's an emergency and the director can add more staff and personnel. That's correct.
So in the future, do those need revised to spell that out a little more clearly?
I don't know. I just think that we either have to be compensated when we're doing more than what that person would have if we send more than that, or something, because.
As far as compensation goes with these patients, the normal billing would apply. So if we go over there to pick up a patient, we'd be, I mean, it's not.
That doesn't mean you're going to collect. It doesn't mean you're going to get that.
No, that's very true.
Listen, in an emergency, you don't get the paperwork. You don't do any of that stuff. You get them to the hospital, which is what you, you're not going to worry about that kind of stuff. But, I mean, that bothers me, and I'm not picking on South Sioux. They just happen to be here today. But, you know, if you have a major fire in one of these other communities, you know, Tera was not inside the city limits.
No.
But we sent all kinds of fire personnel down there to respond because of a 28E agreement with the county or with Sergeant Bluff. And had we lost a fireman in that thing, it would have been all ours. And I don't know how you make it fair, but it's not fair the way the system is set up today. Go ahead and state your name and address if you want to speak.
My name is Clint Merrithy. I'm the Fire Chief for South Sioux City. This particular 28E agreement, the EMS agreement, was really to assist Sioux City as well with the new EMS program that they have, and they're trying to staff everything. We have three ambulances in South Sioux. We're able to staff two fairly quickly. We can call back for a third. South Sioux received a license nearly two years ago to come into Iowa to transport patients around, and this was a thought to help out as the programs are developing on both sides. South Sioux received a grant in 2016 to add five more personnel on, so I have three staffed all the time with the availability to call back. We do have a 28E instant aid agreement with Sioux City. With the newer equipment that we have, we're able to send crews over to assist on this side, and it's reciprocal if we need. Myself, if I'm not there, one of my officers are there, and they require additional services, we go into a mutual aid assignment, which comes out of our local volunteer fire departments. If they cannot answer the alarm quickly, then a call will come over to your law enforcement center, your dispatch center here, and request appropriate equipment. If we need a truck with three or four people, or a fire truck. And then again, if we need ambulances. We haven't had to request any services from any other allied agencies from either state since we put five people on February of last year. We're able to sustain all of our calls. Last year, we had over 1,300 calls, which is 42% above what we had two years ago. So we're maintaining what we have. This is more of an alliance to help both sides, something that either side has never had in the history of either city. So this isn't anything that we're going after to ask, anytime we have something big, we don't think we can handle it, we're going to request your services. We're here to help you as well. We may be small, but we.
I understand that, but 28E agreements are not, when you're the largest area, when you're the largest city, I'm not picking on South Sioux, you're probably more capable of handling things in other communities, but they're not, they have a lot more potential for liability for the largest community in the area than they do for the smallest. That's my point. Because there's no compensate, if you had a fire today in, at IBP, and you needed our big ladder truck, or our big snorkel truck, right? Because you couldn't handle it, and we somehow, because it's a cold day, the guy, fireman falls down and injures himself, under a 28E agreement, we assume that liability. It's not on South Sioux, it's on Sioux City. So that's my problem with these 28E agreements.
Understood, and it'll be the same if we send our firemen over to help as well with our ladder truck.
Well.
But this is, this particular one is for EMS, is for emergency medical.
I understand that, but I'm talking 28E agreements in general in this area.
This particular one doesn't cost any city anything. If we come over and we assist, there is no charge to Sioux City. If we request assistance over in South Sioux, there's no charge for that.
I'm not, I'm not.
It's just talking about hypothetical situations.
Talk about liability.
And hypothetical.
And I think it's challenging to strike a balance, I think, right?
You never want something, a catastrophe to happen at that scale, and I agree, I understand the liability is out there and compensation maybe is a second thought, you know, when those things are happening, I do get that. But I would also really struggle with, wow, there is a huge accident happening over in South Sioux, but we only agreed to send three ambulances because they only have three ambulances, so we have everyone else here that's able and willing to help, but we're not sending anymore. You know what I mean? I would, I would struggle with that as well. That would weigh on my conscience.
Triage and a service request is kind of a struggle sometimes, but we have to, we have to make sure that our home base is covered first.
Yeah.
Same with, same with them. They have to make sure that their primary taxpayers are covered before sending resources out. And I do understand what you're saying about the hypothetical, because it, it could happen, but it could happen both ways. We have far more industry in Sioux City and so on that's potentially subject to disaster situations than, well, with the, except for the big beef processing and some of the major corporations over there. So, I mean.
Do we have more other 28E agreements out there? Okay, so is there a difference between that and mutual aid?
With EMS, not, with EMS, I'm not certain on that. I think we're working on one with North Sioux. North Sioux wanted to do away with their transport agreement that they had and go to a 28E, and then they were also working on a 28E with Sergeant Bluff to basically fill in his backup for us in case, and vice versa.
Is there a difference between mutual aid and 28E agreement? Is that the same thing?
To my knowledge, they're basically the same thing.
The 28E agreement is probably more formal agreement and signed by both agencies or multiple agencies if there is one.
These aren't paramedic assists or terror responses. They're strictly mutual aid, so it's not like we're going over there to hop in their ambulance and help them with their patient that they're going to bill for. It's just we're going over and, or vice versa, coming over.
And it's the same thing, though. The 28E and the mutual aid is the same thing.
The way I understand it.
So now, so now we have a 28E that's more, it's more of an agreement?
Yes.
And it gives, in the case of law enforcement or, I suppose, well, in the case of law enforcement, it gives them the, the legal authority to perform their duties in another jurisdiction, I think, so, as well with city agreements that they've had over the years, but, yes. The whole harmless agreements here.
You don't have 28E agreements with other police departments.
I think we did.
Well, you do through the tri-state drug task force. That's a 28E.
No, well, we've done it in the past. I know when Sergeant Bluff hosted rag bribe, we entered into a 28E agreement, so our officers could go down there and perform.
Maybe in Iowa, but I don't know that you can get that across state lines.
Okay, so.
You've got a federal agreement, Pete.
So we have mutual aid with other small communities, right?
That's correct.
So why, why don't we have a 28E agreement with all these small communities on?
We do have a 28E agreement with North Sioux, I believe.
But, I mean, like Salique, Sergeant Bluff.
You were Sergeant Bluff.
Amber Haggerty, Assistant City Attorney. Traditionally, our 28E agreements are with communities that are in other states. Once we cross that state boundary, we enter into the 28E agreement. We have one with North Sioux City for EMS, and the one tonight with South Sioux City would be our second.
Nebraska has a different code section. They call it differently, the Iowa code section's 28E, that's why it's called 28E.
And the 28E agreement has to receive approval from the Secretary of State as well.
And both cities have a right to terminate the agreement upon a 60-day notice as well.
Correct. And the effective date for the end for this agreement is the end of December of 2021? There is an end date?
Then you're fine, I'm assuming you've looked at this and city legal and, and the whole harmless agreement, you're fine with?
It follows the basic format that we have to follow under state law. There are certain elements that we have to include in all of the agreements, and we followed that format.
You didn't draft the agreement?
This came over from Jim, and we reviewed the agreement. It was patterned after, I believe, the other agreement that we have in place with North.
Correct. Okay. I think that's it, right?
Thank you.
Passes 4-0, and I vote no, and it's not anything against South Sioux. I just don't like these agreements that don't specifically call out the equipment and those sort of things. 14 is a resolution approving a subordination agreement with Heritage Bank for the 48 South Residential Project at 4800 Southern Hills Drive, deferred from January 7, 2019. I'll make a motion to defer it until January 28, 2019.
Second.
15 is a resolution approving amendment number one to the consulting services agreement with HR Green for the Bridgeport West Improvement Project, deferred from December 10, 2018. And I think this was deferred because it was a flat fee, and now it's a, why was it deferred? I can't remember.
Staff missed the deadline.
Oh, is that what it was? That's a different one then, okay. Because I thought we'd approved that one.
Isn't that what was in the RCA about why it was?
Yes.
It was. Gordon Fair, City Engineer. That was deferred at your request.
Right.
Because he was, that they were under lawsuit. We were settling with them or in negotiations with them.
Who?
With, regarding this project and the reason for the overage from HR Green.
Oh, additional inspection and.
For additional inspection.
For being on the project for additional time that went into the evenings.
Yes.
Make sure the work was done.
But why did we defer it? Why would that have any bearing on? That's not why.
We went back and listened to the audio.
Well, I don't think some decisions were made, Gordon, I don't think some decisions were made by the contractor or subcontractor, I'm guessing.
The sub, well, the subcontractor had sad work, and that's the reason they had to redo it multiple times.
They're the ones that are charging for the additional service.
No, I know that, but I don't know why, why we deferred it. That's what I don't understand, but okay, whatever. We have a motion, I'll move it.
Second.
Almost made it to 4:30, Matt.
No, Matt.
Chris Larson Park Riverfront Development Project.
Matt Salvatore, Parks and Recreation Director. Smith Group is here again, our landscape architect. We've been working with them for several years on the riverfront development project. They were here last March and presented our final schematic design that was approved by the city council. Since then, we've been working with them into our final design. We're about 35% into that. This is kind of the final design development, and you will see some refined concepts today based on what was presented in March, some tweaks. It's basically the same project with a lot of refinements. The next steps for the steering, riverfront steering committee is to refine our phasing and start our campaign. So with that, I will kick it over to Tom Rogers, and he's going to work, talk through the entire project with you.
Matt, Tom, before you start, Matt, did you mention, I'm sorry, I was looking at something else here, did you mention that there are members from the parks?
Yeah, there is, there are several members of the park board and riverfront steering committee here in attendance, and we can have a discussion at the end of the presentation, any questions you may have.
Thank you.
Thanks, Matt. Once again, my name is Tom Rogers. I'm a landscape architect with Smith Group. I'm also here with Andy Lumen, who is our project manager with Smith Group, and Greg Roth, who is a civil engineer with Beattest and Kim. And what I'd like to do is just go through the overall approach, what we've been through. I'll do a quick recap of where we started in the master plan and how we got from here to there. Talk a little bit about concept and goals, and then really, we're just going to take a walk through the park to go through from one end to the other, where we're at with our improvements now. Then we'll talk a little about, about budget phasing and next steps. Since a little after March, we've been working on our design development, as Matt mentioned. In the beginning, when we started, we did a master plan for the project to really identify what the goals and the program for the park should be. Last year, in March, I was here and we presented the schematic design as we refined those goals and really made them into something. So this year, we've spent refining those, those original designs and really detailing out what everything will look like, so what you will see is what that looks like. We would move forward with our next step documenting certain pieces that we would implement for construction. I just want to show one slide as a reminder of context of what we're looking at now, and, you know, we've been working on this for a couple of years now, and I went back through some of the earlier slides, and it made me realize, you know, what a transformational opportunity this is. Being so close to the downtown, to have this much land on the river, to change in this way from an underutilized parking lot to a city park is really an important project, and we want to make sure that we're doing that right. And I just want to walk through the approach we've taken to make sure that we're doing this the right way. So we've, we've had quite a bit of public input. This will be the sixth public presentation we've made from our initial charrette, where we gathered input, had public input session, and then several council presentations as well. And I'll talk briefly through, just very quickly, the overall design of the project and how we got to the concept we have. So Highway 29 is being reconstructed. You've all been living with that for a while now. But one of the advantages of that is you're adding different, or different and larger connection points to the river. Two of those are very significant at Virginia and at Floyd. So we really designed around, really looking at those two points and understanding that the center of that would be the most important piece of the park. That is a civic gathering area that we identified as one of our early goals. We wanted a large civic space. And we felt that those two focal points at the end of each of those drives were nodes on either side of that. So this really becomes the focal point for our park. In order to create that, we needed to make sure that we had enough space for this. So we had a number of talks about Chris Larson Park Road and how that fit into the context of the park, and wanting to make sure that we had enough space for this civic area that we were trying to build as the center of the park. We also had conversations about traffic speeds on Chris Larson Park Road, how that was used, and how that should relate to a space along the river in the future. And what we decided through that process, the master plan, and then we confirmed it in schematic design, was that we would split Chris Larson Park Road and have a parking lot at either end, the west end and the east end, and create ample room to turn around. In addition, we would create circulation through the park that would double up with a bike path that would enable us to get large vehicles through, whether a semi for a large event, or a fire truck, or an emergency vehicle, or police for safety measures, or if there is something staging for events, you can get park maintenance equipment or other loading through there. I also want to step back to the one or the three big things that we identified in our initial information gathering, the idea of creating a community space, the center civic focal point. But in addition to that, making sure that we have everyday places for someone to come down on lunch on a Tuesday, after work on a Wednesday, or swing by on a, on a Saturday with their kids, and just to have lots of opportunities for different people to use this space. And lastly, to make sure that we're embracing the river and taking the opportunities that we have to connect to it. In addition to that, one of the key items that we honed in on was creating an iconic feature. When we went through the master plan, we identified a Ferris wheel as a potential iconic feature. The reasons we started with that were, it was, it was a large thing. We wanted to draw people in off the highway, create something that was diverse and dynamic for them to come to again and again. When we presented the schematic design, if you remember, we brought two additional concepts and said, as part of design development, we would work with the steering committee on finalizing what that approach would be. So tonight, I'll present our concept for an interactive fountain that does some of these same things, that meets these goals of creating a beacon, an icon that draws you in from the highway, but also giving you an interactive experience with a water feature and a splash play area that's something dynamic and different every time you come back, and something that works throughout the year, and in addition, is authentic to Sioux City and tells a story of Sioux City. So this is the master plan of the park as it stands today. It looks very similar to the schematic design that you saw in March, and it's been just slowly evolving and being refined into what we have today. Kind of moving from west to east, starting with our entry drive. We have a, can you see, yes, our stockyard garden, which we started with off of Floyd, but we've moved over here, really taking that form of the stockyard and kind of an ironic inspiration, using it as a flower garden, a place to stop and rest. We have our two focal points at Virginia, what we call the Virginia overlook, in the Floyd Plaza. In between that is what we call the Great Lawn, flanked by two places, one, the promenade along the river, and what we call Exploration Ridge along the backside. That is a ridge that we've brought up to partially buffer the highway, both from a noise and a visual standpoint, to make the park feel more of the river. As we move farther to the east, moving into an active green space, basketball courts and a dog park, and then a passive green space farther to the east. Now what we'll do is just kind of walk through, oops, we're going to walk through from the west side to the east side, so we're going to walk down river, and we'll just show you the spaces as they are today. So we start again at this west edge, walking along the side of Chris Larson Park Road, looking down this green space, coming to a shade structure that's used for a day use picnic area, kind of looking through that green space. A little bit farther down is an existing overlook that was part of the infrastructure left over from the Argosy. One of the things we tried to do was where this was there to reuse it in the form and fashion that we could. So we would take the railing off of it, redo the railing to match everything, so it looks like it's connected to the rest of the design of the park, and then repurpose some of the seating, make it a comfortable place to be. But it's really the, what's there now? So if you walk down there now, it's, it's what you would see.
I think I asked this at the Parks and Rec meeting, and I understand it's an existing structure, but there's no way to make that accessible, right?
There's not without building an extensive ramp, because it is a significant amount of stairs. So what we did is I'll show you on the, on the Virginia Plaza, we did do that with an accessible ramp. Chris Larson Park, that next step, so that idea of taking that patterning, both the horizontal patterning of breaking up the squares to the vertical patterning of the poles that you see represented with lights here. Just down river from that is what we've kind of started to call the yoga lawn, which is really a flexible green space adjacent to the shelter, sized in a manner that could be used for small events. One of those could be a Saturday morning yoga class. And then that brings us to our first node, which is the Virginia Plaza. So this is just off of the drive. It aligns with the drive that comes in from Virginia. The frontage road goes here, and this is where Chris Larson Park Road is today. So we've created a turnaround here. We've created a larger area where either a fire truck or someone with a boat who happened to be down here, who shouldn't be down here, has an opportunity to turn around, but we've created bollards around it, so you can't get into the park. There would be removable bollards, so you could get a fire engine or an emergency vehicle through there. That can also double as parking for food trucks, or parking for vendors in an event. There's a small shelter building here with a restroom in it, and a plaza that overlooks the water. And then here's that terrace that I was mentioning at Virginia, and I'll show you how you make your way down to there in a moment. The other thing that moves through here is the bike path, which I will go through in a little bit more detail in a moment. And then there is a stage that flanks the western edge of the Great Lawn, and that could be used for seating on a regular day. It could also be used as a, as a concert stage as well. Someone could, we, we worked with the park staff on the trailer that they have to make sure that they could back that in there, or someone else could back something in there as well.
Can you go back one more?
Yep.
There's only the ability to walk on the Virginia Access underneath there, right? A vehicle doesn't come in.
Correct. And the way, so the Virginia Access is a signalized intersection, but because of some vehicle stacking requirements, DOT was not in favor of opening that up to Chris Larson Park Drive. However, we have designed this area, so if at some point in the future, that is, there might be a possibility of pursuing a right out from there, or maybe a one-way out, it would allow that to happen. So we were mindful of that being a possibility in the future, but it's not showing up in the design right now, because in our conversations with the DOT, that wasn't something that they were in favor of at this moment.
I just think of people exiting, you know what I mean? That's going to be a major exit right there, where people get off, and they're like, oh, I want to go check this out.
Mm-hmm.
Never mind, I got to figure out how to get there.
But when they do exit here, they will be able to drive up and turn in on Floyd. So they will see here, they'll be able to look at the park, and actually, I can show you that, I'm going to skip ahead. So they will actually, they'll come to this point here, and they will drive to this point here, and then they could turn in. So that actually all will be pretty accessible for them.
I didn't mention that before, there is that frontage road.
Mm-hmm. And that was one of the reasons why we had extensive conversations about Chris Larson Park Road, because the highway, plus the frontage road, plus that road, is a lot of roads in this pretty narrow area, not a lot of green.
No, that's fine. I mean, I think then you just direct them.
Mm-hmm.
They can go park this way, or whatever you want.
Yes, yes. So this, the, that, that lot at Floyd is actually larger than the other one for that reason. We saw that as the more accessible location because of that. I'm just going to go.
Two different points, basically.
Yep, exactly. So I'll go back a couple of slides. So this is the view walking up from Virginia at the, at your focal point, right? Your view at the end of that is the shelter, and then you could look upriver or downriver. To the right is that plaza we talked about with the food trucks. To the left would be your event lawn. This shows the view from the river looking at the plaza. So this is about where the ramp down to the Argosy boat was. It exists today, and you can see this space here actually becomes a ramp that works its way up to the promenade, and we've stepped down about three feet off of that. So I showed you the view of the Great Lawn. This shows, I'm going to walk you down the promenade on the riverside, and then Exploration Ridge on the north side, and then we'll talk a little bit about Floyd Plaza. One of the things to notice about the promenade is we've actually set it back a little bit farther off the edge of the ridge than it is today. It's set back, we, we basically took the edge of the ridge and we offset it 10 feet, and then we planted that. So there's a little bit of a buffer from the end of this path to the ridge. This is also a 20-foot wide paved area. It's designed to be constructed for emergency vehicles or semi to access it, but we've broken up the patterning and paving of it so that you can see the different colors. It's really just a different texture and pattern on the concrete. On the right would be for the bike lanes, and on the left would be for pedestrians. It could also be signed that way as well, and it could be imprinted, so you, you see that circulation. And that makes it feel, it organizes traffic, number one. It also breaks up the space, so it doesn't feel like a highway, but it gives lots of room to maneuver around the space. Then off, on, on the side of that, there's a series of steps that are built into a small, a small mound that buffers you a little bit from the Great Lawn behind, lets you sit on the river and kind of have a spot to hang out there, but doesn't totally screen you. They're only three or four feet high, so if you were standing up, an adult was standing up, you could see past them, you could see on the other side. So if we go to the other side, this idea of Exploration Ridge, we have a ridge that we've started at either end, at Floyd and Virginia, and it starts at grade, and then it builds up to about 15 feet above grade in the middle. This is still lower than the highway, you'll still be able to see over it, but with some planting on it, it provides some buffer to make it feel a little bit more part of the river than part of the highway. So we were very mindful about that. In addition to that, we consolidated our play areas and put one larger play structure or playground in the middle. It's not really a play structure, which you can see here. This is built into the hillside. It's a, it's a series of soft surface play environment with slides and with a couple climbing structures. These poles actually have, would have nets on them, so you could climb up the, up the slope. It's a series of soft surface play environment with slides and with a couple of climbing structures. These poles actually have, would have nets on them, so you could climb up the slope. These are events that are just built into the ground. And then this is the larger kids' area. This is aimed at five to 12-year-old kids. This smaller tot area is aimed at two to five-year-old kids, and it's accessible through this route over here. The five to 12-year-old area is accessible through this route over here. Then we move to the east end of the park, to the Floyd Pavilion. This is the larger of the two pavilions. We did that because this is the more accessible route from a vehicle. We saw this as being the easier place to drop things off, to host large events. In this area, we have a drop-off. You drive over and then you can park here. The pavilion is here. There's men's and women's restrooms. There's also storage. And then there's mechanical rooms for the fountain and splash play area that you see here. There are covered seating areas as well as a larger patio area. And there's kind of a smaller version of that stage area I talked about on the other side, which would function for a small event if you were sitting under the covered seating area or you could turn it around and function, make it work for a larger event too. So there's lots of flexibility with this space. That's one of the key things that we wanted to design in. There's also an overlook that looks down the river and then our focal, our iconic fountain and River Lights monument, which you can see in this view. So this is looking from the green, looking down river into Floyd Pavilion. So the road and the entrance is over here and the river is over here. This is the first of about six or so structures that we have. It's about 30 feet tall. It's a lit-up structure that we can change the colors of over time, and I'll show you some images of that. And then we've actually shown some patterning. This is just kind of a generic pattern, but I'll go through what the patterning looks like. This shows another view as you drive up, and what you see in the background is kind of a mist or kind of a fog. That's the fountain. We did extensive work with a fountain consultant, working on how this thing would work, how it would fit together, making sure that we were getting really good use out of it, making sure it was interactive and fun and playful, but not using too much water and not making maintenance too much of a burden. So this is a series of sprays that can be operated either on a timer or on a motion sensor. So when you walk up to it, they come on, and then the fog does the same thing. The lights would be programmable by the park staff and they could be changed over different times of the year.
How many walls do you think you'll have?
How many walls? So these are the features right here. So there's six or seven of them altogether. The tallest one is here. It's about 30 feet tall. And what we wanted to do is make sure that it was something that you could walk in and around instead of just, and through really, instead of just around. So you get a different experience, a unique experience by being able to go in different parts of this.
So can the lights, I'm sure, are going to be different colors?
Yes. Yes. So actually, I'll show you a little bit more about the lights. These are designed as larger lit-up structures that would be sandwiched by stainless steel panels. That stainless steel panel would have a perforated pattern in it, and behind it would be set a series of lights. So when you walk by these, you kind of get the sparkle that you would get off the river. If you think about how the light reflects off the river, you would get that look and character. So one of the things we wanted to do was how do we take that idea of the light and the ambiance and the feeling of the river and bring it up into a structure? And how do we start to layer these things all together in a way that really represents Sioux City? So part of this perforated panel is actually a design. It's a custom design that would be indicative of the community. This is an example of a river, but this could be a history panel. It could be architecture of downtown. It could be a timeline. They could be different on different, since we have seven of them to work with. It would not be the whole thing. It would just be the part that's close to where you view, so the rest of it would be a standard perforated panel that these lights would be behind. And then we can change this color, whether it's for time of year, if you want to have an event at Christmas, or whether it's for time of night, when you want to come back later or see it move or see something happen. So it gives a dynamic experience that you can see again and again, and kind of gives you a reason to come back and look at it. But then if you go there during the day and the lights aren't on, it's still interesting to look at. And there's something that you can see from close up and really appreciate it when you're right next to it and touching it, but also driving by, that light, that beacon will draw you in from the highway.
So what power is the lights?
They're LED lights. They are not solar powered, if that's what you're asking.
And so are they on all night long, every night?
No, they would be on a timer and they would go off at a certain point. So we could determine what the use is and do they go till 10 or do they go at a later time or do they dim at some point? I mean, I think there would be lots of flexibility within the system to control that and see if you wanted it, you know, on New Year's, do they stay on till after midnight and there's a celebration there? Or on a regular summer night, are they going off earlier? There could be some flexibility in that. This is what that could look like in the night, and this shows you some of the different colors and how the fountain is lit up as well. Oops. And this just shows you another view from over the top and shows you how we layered in a series of stone on the base to really kind of play up that idea of the sedimentation and the buildup and the shoreline of the river, but also to give kids something to climb on, to give parents a place to sit, and to be able to be on the edges of this thing to make it a little bit more interesting. So moving east of that is our last shelter, our restroom shelter, an exercise node with basketball courts, a dog park with a small dog and large dog park. And then we have a shade structure and just kind of a passive picnic area. This is that first view. This is an active green, flexible green space that could be a place to toss a frisbee on a regular day. It could be programmed by the park staff for bag toss or bocce or anything like that. You can see the restroom in the background. You can see the basketball just past that. And you can kind of see the dog park, the dog park fence in the foreground of this image. This is a larger view of the dog park. As I mentioned, it's split into two different areas with kind of a side-by-side entry, but they're two different entries. And this is a view looking back across the park, so that shows that shade structure and then you can see looking really upriver. And this shows that core area we talked about.
Really just a minor question, but the way you said it, I just want to clarify.
Oh, sure.
We'll go back to the dog park a second. Did you say side-by-side entry is what you're kind of thinking?
Mm-hmm. So we bring you to a core area, which is here, and we provided two different entries that you could get in at this point.
Because I'm just thinking like, and I, Matt knows this, I don't know dog parks, right? Like, I don't know the best idea, but it's like the whole point is kind of separate those animals, you know, different energy levels or habits, what have you. I don't know.
They would be required to be on a leash in this area.
Correct. But I wonder, what I'm getting, gosh, you're bringing them right next to each other to get in there. Would it be better to have two entrances that are 20 feet away from each other? So it's like, well, I'm not bringing my Bernard next to your Chihuahua, but if you have them right next to each other, it's like, well, guess what? They're meeting right at the entrance or right when we're ready to go. It's just a thought. You just said it that way and I was like, you know, it could be challenging if you're trying to separate the spaces. And again, I reiterate, I'm not an expert. It's just a thought.
So you bring up a really good point, and one thing we do to put them together is to kind of consolidate services, whether it's a sign board or whether it's a water fountain or anything like that. But what you could do is put that thing in the middle and kind of have the entrances a little farther apart. So they're in the same area, but they're not door here and door here. They're door with 10 feet and then a door. So we're consolidating them generally, but they're not, you're not opening the gate, you know, the two gates brushing up against each other with the dogs.
That's what I-
You've got a little more space in that. So that's probably, you know, if you look across the basketball court, that's 40 or 50 feet across. That's probably a 20, 25-foot area where these two entrances happen.
Say that again?
It's probably a 20, 25-foot span from here to here. So there's an entrance here and an entrance here. So those gates could be 15 feet apart, so they don't have to be, you know, right side by side.
I just want at least be thinking about that if that's-
Definitely. It's a great point. And I'll go through, we went through that. We went through our view back. And then this shows the overview of that central green area. So Floyd is to your right, Virginia is to your left. And this shows what it could look like at night in an event. And then we'll talk a little bit about budget, and I'm also going to talk about Perry Creek a little bit because one of the things we were asked to look at was Perry Creek and improving fishing access along the riverfront, so I want to make sure we cover that. So we have refined our overall plans. We're at a full build-out cost right now, our full build-out budget. This includes construction costs. This also includes consultant fees permitting, all of those things, and contingency at 16.4 million. This includes everything that's shown in every drawing. We understand that this project will get built in phases. We understand that there's certain money the city has allocated right now. And so what we've done is we've, from the beginning, we've broken this into base costs that the city is looking at funding and additional costs which we would look at raising other money for, whether through grants or through private funding. So those base costs are the mobilization and demolition, earthwork, putting in the plantings that you see, water and storm sewer services, the streets and parking and paving and your general circulation, your trail, your key sidewalks, and then, I should say, your pedestrian lighting and electrical. That budget is about five, five and a half, 5.6 million. So of that, the city has about $6 million that are available for funding. So we've been looking at how we strategically phased this project to build some of the basic improvements, but also find opportunity to raise money through grant funding or other sources. So what we're looking at now is fiscal year 2020, there's $2 million available, and then $1 million a year every year after that. So we're looking at a first phase that really starts at the east end and works west. And what that does is it builds the Great Lawn. It builds some of this circulation area, but it generally leaves some grass areas. That, and it does some of the bigger mobilization and, not mobilization, demolition that we have to do. It carries on a lot of those costs. Phase two builds Exploration Ridge, and then it builds the second parking lot in some of those core areas. We've said phase three is $3 million. That's what's available now. That's construction could start in the spring of 2020, complete in the fall of 2020. Phase two, we've allocated $1 million. That is the city's money. And we're taking an estimate that the city can raise $1 million, whether through its variety of funding sources. And then taking, and that would be 2021 to 2021, spring to fall. And then taking a pause where in 2023, we would build that phase three. And that could be more, and these could be structured slightly different depending on how fundraising goes. So we're kind of taking, what's the best, most practical, pragmatic approach for this? How do we get the basic infrastructure in and how do we put this together in a way that we can leverage other investments and make this a really great space over time? So lastly, I just want to touch on Perry Creek, and I will point out that this estimate does include improvements that we have proposed at Perry Creek.
Does or doesn't?
It does improve the Perry Creek improvements. So we looked at, in the initial design, we looked at fishing on Chris Larson Park at Floyd River, and we looked at building a structure out over the Floyd River. So we found out a couple of things. One, there were some current concerns from the DNR and the Corps of Engineers about flooding and flood levels and water in that area. It also wasn't the best fishing, and we decided that it was, there was one third thing, is that it wasn't very accessible. And we decided that because it was so far from parking, we didn't want to extend the road in. It wasn't as good a fishing as it could have been or the best spot on the river. And it was kind of an expensive piece of infrastructure. We took that part out of our concept. And so when we presented the schematic design, we were asked to look at Perry Creek. So we spent some time meeting with Corps of Engineers, meeting with the DNR, bringing several concepts to our steering committee. Some of those concepts had floating docks, some of them had piers, some of them had overhangs. There was some, we found out a couple of things. One, the best fishing in the area is right here, kind of midway up Perry Creek. That's where people tend to go to fish. Two, there's actually some energy dissipators that are in this area. So the Corps was really reluctant to have us build something and get people really close to there. But what, so what we did is we created an accessible route to this place, and we created a fishing platform in this area, and I'll show you that. So we started with this design, actually we went through the dock scenarios of actually cantilevering it out and trying to get better access to the water. The Corps had some concerns about how this wall works structurally, both from how it was built and that it could handle this load that it was put on it, and also from a scour standpoint of flood levels coming up and getting behind this. Because we are at a flood elevation where this will go underwater in a flood event. This did go underwater in the last flood and we would expect it to go underwater again. So we pulled that back to the level. We put an accessible rail in and really created the same experience. You're just not hanging out over the water. And we'll show that this way as well. So there is an accessible route. We've built this sidewalk or proposed the sidewalk down from the parking lot, provided a couple lawn terraces and a variety of seating, and then created this accessible fishing platform within Perry Creek or on the edge of Perry Creek. So really what we're doing is promoting that as an accessible fishing location along the riverfront.
You're a long ways from, you're above the water quite a ways.
You are above the water a little ways, yeah. Depending on the water elevation.
And remind me, Matt, are we saying just go down to the other fish cleaning station, right? We're not putting anyone there?
Yeah, we didn't say you need to duplicate fishing stations, but, you know, basically your way on the back out to the park.
Oh, yeah.
You'd hit that, you'd have to pass right by that fish cleaning station.
Bucket or whatever?
Yep.
And then the other question I had, that last slide, the, I don't know, show the schematic, more, 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 that one. It does show the renovated bridge. That's still the plan, right? Because my thing was just trying to get the bike path not crossing the street multiple times.
Yeah, that's the current bridge. That project hasn't, isn't further enough along yet, but if a bridge does get renovated there, we want to take the trail, I guess, along with it so that you don't have to worry about crossing Chris Larson Park Road twice the way you do now.
So that's not planned right now.
That's not a part of this project. Right. That's what we're going to hopefully continue to work with engineering on that.
Can you show that dock thing to the River City anglers?
Kelly had the conversations with the fishing community, so I don't know if he reached out to them or not. Do we have some comment?
No, I know you can't pull up a 10-pound catfish on that little wall you got there. That'd be ridiculous.
You got to come to the mic and state your name and address.
That's not my here, but my name's Christian Bowder. I came for a different issue, but-
That's fine.
That wall's ridiculous, and I think you picked up what I'm throwing down. If you were catching onto a fish or catfish, how many fish would you be fishing for there? Or your carp is pretty common in that area.
Yeah, there's no sense even building that.
Right. It's ridiculous.
Well, that's the only place that we have-
You swim in and you're like, yeah, 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 and then, oh, I'm just going to watch it swim around for a while. You ain't going to pull up a fish on the wall.
That's the only place that we've ever seen people actually fishing at the Perry-
But they're not, they're going right to the edge of the water. They're not fishing.
What they're saying is once it breaches the water, it's not going to stay on the line.
I've seen very large fish in five-gallon buckets right in that same location.
Yeah, but they're fishing right from the bank.
They're fishing from the-
No, I've seen them from that location specifically.
Then they walk down the wall and then they pull the fish. They're not bringing it up on the wall. It's not happening.
How far down could you reach a net?
I mean, you're not going all the way down to the water. The problem, once you talk about problems with actually getting out into the channel or into the Missouri-
Well, there's some, well, getting into the channel, just the amount of current that we have plus the fact that we're on the outside of the bend makes it very difficult to build a pier that's there. If you think about the, there was a barge there that actually protected the Argosie when it was there and the amount of debris that would stack up there. So you'd have to build a really heavy piece of infrastructure to be out on the bend. We talked to the Corps about building something within that, and they were pretty opposed to building a structure that was down on that level with some of what they have that's in there and also some of the flood rise considerations that are there.
But it's going to flood anyway. Why can't you just put like a sidewalk for people to fish off of? I mean, why don't you back up to that slide?
Because they're going to fish, oops.
Hang on.
I just-
I mean, you could-
You mean extend the sidewalk down farther?
You could take that same concept and go all the way down to the-
You could extend the sidewalk farther.
And take it all the way down to the river itself, where the Perry Creek and the Missouri meet.
We do run into some challenges with the actual run of the sidewalk and the slope that's there and making sure that we're keeping it accessible, because it's not a very, it's not a very steep slope that we can have to maintain an accessible route. But you could extend that sidewalk farther down so that, as this gentleman said, that you could walk your fish down closer to the bank.
Well, whatever. I mean, need to talk to people that actually fish. And I fish out of a boat. I don't think you're going to, I agree. If you're, they're fishing for catfish and carp. They're not fishing for walleye at that point, which you would use a net with, but I guess you could use it for the others, but I haven't seen anybody, but you got to get down, you can't, you know, anyway.
And you said you can't bring it lower because of the flood concerns. That would-
If you actually, I'll bring up something.
Well, that's fine. I'm saying if you keep it level or you keep it even with the river, not the little-
When you originally talked, you were going to put it down here where it says Perry Creek.
Yep, and that's where we started, and that's where we found out a couple of things. One was that people were fishing up here, not down here. Two was trying to put something-
How did you determine that?
That was, we spoke with people that were fishing there.
And they're pulling them up in that wall?
I've never seen anybody fishing other than over by the wall, but Kelly's had more of the conversations than I have.
Okay, let it go then.
And we, but we can certainly refine.
No, I'm not going to argue about fishing anymore. It should have been more down at the other end, but that's okay.
But if you leave it even with, and so there's not that outcropping, like if you just bring it down so you would be closer to the water for it, is the only concern of the flooding?
No, the other concern as we start to go lower is that there's a significant amount of movement that this area has because the water does come up in this area. And if you look at the pattern of this, if you see how this kind of bumps out here? So this is not a static condition. This is a dynamic condition that has evolved over time. If you look at when this was built, it actually was built and this was open more like this, where this wasn't here. So that's built up over time, sediment that happened from the flood, but it's happened from other annual events as well. So that moves around a little bit. Some of the concern is building that infrastructure, building that walk in a way that's not going to wash out and get destroyed by some of these flooding events and making it accessible. So it starts to become this little complicated piece of infrastructure to build. It's always, which is always a dynamic when you're on the water's edge. It's always, which is always a dynamic when you're on the water's edge.
Matt, how high is the platform above the creek?
Sorry, and the Corps had concerns about building those improvements as well.
Yeah, do you know?
Twelve feet, twelve fifteen?
Guarantee it's gonna be at least on days, it's gonna be, nobody's dragging a catfish up.
Twelve fifteen feet from there?
Oh, yeah.
Twelve to fifteen, I don't think it's quite that far.
Shoot that catfish.
I would say it's, it's not, it's not fifteen, it's less than that. Water, water in the high seventies.
It depends on the flow.
It does depend on the flow.
And you're at a high watermark right now, I mean, the Corps has been releasing excess water since last summer, but it doesn't matter, let it go, let's move on.
Go ahead.
Instead of making a fishing dock, why don't you make an observation dock, deck, where you kind of have like little, kind of like a dam type thing? But not a dam where it don't hold the water back, it ain't gonna impede the water flow. Stock it with huge catfish where, and you could have like little, where people feed it, you could have some geese there, if you'll feed the geese, just observation.
Corps won't let you do that.
That would make a lot more sense than a fishing platform.
Yep.
Okay, what else you got?
So that, that is all, that is the, the entire park, kind of the summary of the whole park, so. If you have other questions, I can go back.
I, I've got a big question, you were gonna try to attract hundreds of people and you got sixty seven stalls. Where are people gonna park? Are we still gonna park at, are we still gonna park in the auditorium parking lot and walk across there? Because if you are, that's a long ways away to the activity area.
Sure, so we, we actually talked quite a bit about that at the master plan stage and schematic design stage. And what we set upon was establishing an amount of parking that we felt would work for day use. And for larger events, we would have parking that was adjacent across the street here, and then in some of the adjacent lot that's across the highway over here.
But where? We don't own land there, where, so where is it gonna be? And who's gonna, that's not in your sixteen point four million dollar budget, guys, so. I mean, this is all great, but if you don't have parking, don't build a park, because people are not gonna walk miles to go to this. And do we still have, can we still get under, I'm not convinced we can. Are we still gonna be able to get under the interstate? They've got the bridges there, but they're not gonna allow traffic, so we'll still be able to get under it Nebraska Street. But where, but if you park, where are you gonna park in Virginia Street? I mean, the case, the Hardee's guy's not gonna want you parking in his lot going here.
Honestly, your best.
And the people that have the right of first refusal, like Lechner Lumber on that lot, can exercise that with the DOT unless you can make a lease with them.
Your.
On Virginia.
Your best bet is probably the Tyson Longline parking lot, which is a little bit away. But similar to like Saturday in the Park, I mean, if you're gonna have a large event in that great lawn, you're probably shuttling people to that space, just like what they do for Saturday in the Park. And then I thought was hopefully get overflow parking, but that's, that's something that has to be.
Right, well, one of the, one of the things we also recognized was that if we parked it for five hundred people, we'd have what we have today, which is a five hundred car lot. So there's a couple, there's a couple options that are here. We talked about walking in, we talked about shuttling in. We've also designed, you know, the way Chris Larson Park works, we've designed some parking that is head in parking here. That's something that you could provide special event parking or an expansion of that in some way if you wanted to accommodate more vehicles. But there, there is a little bit of an option there with some of that. We've set on the numbers, we set on a number of about seventy to eighty cars, we're at.
Seven.
Yeah, sixty seven right now. And actually, I think that parking that says forty on the right is actually forty five, I will check that, I think that's a typo.
Would you be able that where it says parking forty, would you be able to push that north and make another row?
I don't.
If, if there's a lot of slope, you just put a retaining wall and make another row?
I don't believe so, because we're, we would be on DOT's property then. They do have a fence that's there, that's about where the dog, the dog park fence is actually DOT's fence. So this fence, it's not built right now, but it would continue about right here. So I don't, I don't think we'd be able to fit a whole nother row in.
You know, my guess too is, you know, people are gonna be walking, they're gonna be riding, it's not just parking, so hopefully.
Well, here, here's the problem, Rhonda, what do you have to have, Alex, you should know this, how many parking stalls for handicap people in a, as, as compared to the total parking? Like four for ten or some, I mean.
Four for ten or one for ten, yeah.
So you're only gonna have about seven or eight, nine, ten handicap parking stalls here? If you have a major event, you're gonna need all sixty seven of them for handicap people. So then what do old guys like Pete and I do?
Handicap.
We don't have the sticker in our car, that's the problem.
Well, let's get you one.
On the parking eighteen, could you run that line of cars all the way west?
Yeah, that's what I was saying, is you might be able to expand, yeah, you might be able to expand that parking.
I hope it's not a might, I hope we would plan that. Um, and then probably towards Exploration Ridge, there's no way to go that way. And obviously you could direct people, I agree, if you can get more parking on the other side of the interstate, or you can park at the Expo and run on the trail or something.
That's another good point.
You know what I mean, is like, you could just direct people, hey, we're having a trail event, you park at the Expo or park somewhere there and you hop on the trail there. Or even, gosh, you can park down by Chautauqua and ride up or something.
And we do want to promote alternative mobility and transportation with this, so recognizing that some people will want to use that to bike here or to walk here from a little bit farther away, so we feel.
Also, if you're gonna have an event down there, you can, there's always fiddle.
Mm-hmm.
Fiddle from Tyson.
And it really is a balance of what are we designing for? Are we designing for people to use the space, or are we designing for the big event? And, and we've done this actually on a lot of projects where we get into this parking struggle, because you're, you're trying to accommodate so many things, and what you wind up doing is creating sometimes what can be a vacant space a lot of the days of the year, so we've been.
That's true, but I would think on a Saturday, you'd want more than a hundred and thirty four people parking down there. If you take sixty seven times two, that's what you'll average, if you're lucky in Sioux City. That's a hundred and thirty four people, that's a lot of area for a hundred and thirty four people. Now granted, some will park over by the Anderson Dance Pavilion, some may park over to the arena, but you will cause conflicts with that. When they have a big event and you say park in the arena parking lot, that's not gonna work. Because it's not gonna work, because we've seen that at the Tyson Event Center and the Longline. Try to have an event and it doesn't, it conflicts with what's going on in the Tyson. I, I'm not trying to be on your parade today, but sixty seven stalls is not very much parking. And if you start, let's be realistic, right now, let's go claim the lot by Floyd Boulevard that's next to, across the street from Mid America. Let's claim that today from DOT, not let them resell that, and put it in your budget, because you're gonna need that for any kind of an event. And let's not start with something that's sixteen point four million, knowing it's going to be twenty million easily when we get done. I think we ought to be transparent about it and say, we're gonna, we're gonna try to get work with the DOT and get that Lechner lot back before the Larry Book, I think is probably the right guy, before he claims that, because there's a lot of parking you could have happen there with a trail across. But let's put in the budget so we know that, because I don't see. Unless you guys know more than, but you want people to use it, people, the, the one thing that'll drive people not using it is make them walk three miles to get to it. Because not all of us want to go down there just to walk around. I realize that that's what you're trying to get, is active participation, I understand that. But maybe I just want to go down and look at your fountain, I'm not walking from the Tyson Event Center over, not gonna do it.
We also have a parking lot going up too with Hard Rock, so that'd be another option.
But you're gonna park there to go down to Floyd Boulevard and look at those fountains? I'm not, and, and nobody my age is going to, Rhonda, so you, you've made this a twenty to, under forty year old park.
Matt, is there any opportunity to use some of the green space you have down there now and make it parking?
Yeah, we can work with Smith Group on making those.
If we, you know, to get more parking without having to shuttle in and.
One action.
Or maybe not, maybe, I don't know.
There's an opportunity to increase the parking count that we have today. However, there will be a limit to how much we can increase that parking count without sacrificing some of the, the events that you have in the park. So there's a balance between the two. And so I think the, the big thing that we need to land on is what a target number is. And the target number that we set was between seventy and eighty before, and I apologize, I, I do believe that, that parking is forty five, not forty. But, but that being said, that's, you know, that's a handful of spaces. If you feel that it needs to be substantially more parked than it is, then we have to address that in the overall.
You know what, we gotta be careful too, because my whole thing is, I don't want to look like a parking lot.
Exactly, exactly.
No, this is a park.
This is a great, yeah, this, this is a great plan that you've done. And Tom, I want to compliment you because you've been extremely flexible on public input. We have had a lot of public meetings, I get that, we're gonna probably have some more, but you've been very flexible. The problem Pete, I have, it's a narrow space, it's long and narrow, and we could sit up here and say, we want two hundred parking spaces, but you're gonna sacrifice, as you said, the green space, and.
Not what I'm saying though, Dan, I'm saying.
Why, no you're not, you're looking.
Put it across the street, because that's what you're gonna end up doing, and put it in the budget now so we know it.
I appreciate that, Mayor.
Let's be transparent about what we're doing here, because you're gonna need it.
I, I appreciate, and I, that's the way I took what you were saying, but what I'm saying is, don't, I don't think, I think we want to look at what the options the mayor's talking about, and not right now, look at, can we, because we could increase parking anytime we want, but you're gonna sacrifice so much. And the other good thing about this plan is it offers a little something for everyone in the community, and for those that visit our community. I mean, at first I was gonna say you've taken a blank canvas, but it's not a blank canvas and painted a beautiful park on it, because the canvas you showed earlier had all that sea of cement.
Little bit of stuff in there.
Sea of parking, and you worked around that, and yes, there're gonna be some demolition cost, but it's still, it, it's really, I mean, we should all be excited about this, and I, and I know the mayor is, and we all are, so don't get us wrong, we want it to be the best we, we can make it. But this is just a great plan that you've presented.
Dan, I couldn't, I couldn't, I wouldn't disagree a bit, I think it's a tremendous plan, and, and I hope it works out that way. Parking being a legitimate concern to get people down there on a daily basis, and I suspect that you may be right, that, that, that seventy to seventy five ballpark, people that might use it on a nice summer day, weekday, where there aren't big events happening. But if you do plan on making it, not, don't even have to have a big event, but on weekends when people aren't working and the weather's good, I can see a couple hundred people down there on any given day having a great time. So I just throw the idea out to see if there is any green space available. I, I look at the dog park, is the dog park, park too large? I don't know, can we, I don't know the, the sizes, but can we squeeze them in? Because it would tie in rather nicely to the turnaround. I, I don't know, or can we go back down, as Alex suggested, to the, to the west from the Virginia Street and, and, and park where you have the eighteen? It's just, the concept is, is terrific, I have no anxiety about it at all. I, and, and I hope the community gets behind it, and there are people who can step forward and, and, and help with contributions. It's just, you don't want to get so much in there that there's no room for people to get down there.
Well, you're gonna have people parking on that road, whether you like it or not. That's what happens when you have a wedding at the Anderson Dance Pavilion, of course, now they park on the park road. And you, and you just are gonna come to grips with that, if that's acceptable, if you've made that wide enough so that they can still get in and out, then that probably works. But it's, they're gonna park there, you might be better off to make sure that that's the case, that that road's another three or four feet wide, so that on, you know, people coming and going. But they're gonna park on that, they do now, if you go down there on a major event day, so.
When the River Bowl was down there, they parked everywhere.
I know, that's what I'm saying, so it's gonna happen.
Sure.
We'll pursue that area to the north before we add a lot more parking within the park itself.
You know, here's the deal, this is our jewel. This, this riverfront is, is gonna be the jewel of Sioux City when we get done, so we, we have one shot at this, to do it right. And, and we want to do it right, and we want the most people that, that we can get down there, and we want it in the shortest amount of, you know, time that they can get there from the Tyson to wherever they're driving, you know, so, you know, we want people to enjoy it, and that's, that's what it's all about, but we got one shot at, gotta do it right.
Art and I are the only ones in the room old enough to remember, but thirty years ago, Art, they, we had the Siasio Plan, and everybody said, this is the crown jewel. This is where we're gonna make things happen, this is gonna be the greatest place ever. And then you elect people that don't want to do any of this stuff, so it grew weeds again, and that's what you have to be careful of. Get a realistic plan, get a realistic budget, and begin to do it in pieces, so it's, you don't eat the whole elephant at once. Try to have this community eat the whole elephant at once. But I just hope that we're serious about getting the plan going, because we were here thirty years ago, ask Mr. Art, he'll tell you. Were we not, Art? And, and nothing happened? So we've got to be careful that we don't build this thing to the point where people get turned off and get real negative about it right away. And you've got to convince people you can do it over phases, but you have to have a commitment out of this community that something will happen, or it's a nice plan that you've charged us a lot of money for, like Dave Siasio, that'll sit on a shelf for thirty more years and nothing will get done, which bothers me, because I think it's a great plan, I just think you, I mean, if you want people to go there and you want people to use it, you've got to have more than eighty or eighty stalls, that's my personal opinion, and I hope I'm wrong, but I hope I'm right, because that means people are using it a lot more than what you're anticipating, so.
We, we might. I'm not gonna disagree with you right now, but, you know, we might find ourselves then, what's our priority for what aspects of the park are we looking for? And I don't look forward to doing that, because I think, then it becomes personal to me, I might say, well, I just like something really serene where I can just sit and sleep for a couple of hours, but I, I think we just want to be careful.
I like the Ferris wheel, but everybody laughed, but you know what, that Ferris wheel will cost you a lot more than his spray fountains will cost you, I can tell you that, so. Saying.
I like the lights, I think those are gonna be a, a big deal. And it's gonna be a lot more lighting than what a Ferris wheel would be, so I, I'm, I'm totally on board with that.
All right, citizen, can, anyone, citizens want to be heard?
Chris.
On the park.
On the park.
Oh, about the park?
Yes.
You probably get a lot of parking spots in those basketball courts.
Didn't you say citizens and citizens, Bob?
Yes, for this park, for this park.
Art, come on up and state your name and address.
Good afternoon, Art Silva, Deerfield Drive, Sioux City. Just a question, I'm looking at the great lawn, will that be lit at night, or that could be like Central Park at night? It's, it could be a safety issue.
Uh, we have designed some large floodlights into it, so we can light it up.
Okay, I, I just a question, I don't know what the specs call, but I think you should have some kind of lighting and security down here at night for people that might want to use it, thank you.
Thanks. Thank you.
Have floodlight issues before when we did the bridge, where it interfered with the neighbors across the river. Would floodlights interfere with the people driving down the interstate, so be careful with that.
You can shield those, because with the new lighting, you can put a ballpark right next to the interstate now, which you couldn't used to do, and then it's the way that, the way they can, you can do that.
Yes, yes, the lights would be designed as full cutoff lights, which means there's not light escaping out to the sides, they're, they're very direct.
Yeah.
I like how Bob's looking in the future about the parking and stuff like that, I see all these trails, intricate trails, and I see all these trees and this nice grass, different shapes of grass, and. What is the cost to maintain this a year? You know, has anybody, have you guys?
Yeah, they've got a budget for that, and they're, they're building it.
I'm sorry, this is my first, I'm a virgin.
Yeah, no, they're building it, they're building it, so it's a whole lot of low maintenance flower type stuff.
And to keep the sidewalks off the snow and all that stuff, and just, I don't know, it looks like a big deal, this first, I've never really been involved, I'm really out of my element here, I'm a virgin.
Chris, you're doing just fine.
So most, most of us are too on this one. Any other citizens that want to be heard? All right.
I really, yeah, I really appreciate you making the report, Matt, thank you for, for all that the steering committee's done, parks and wreck. I mean, it's just, I'm telling you, I'm, I'm with Rhonda on this, I mean, it's just, we want to do it right, we, we're gonna have to be flexible. I hope we can be as flexible as you have been with the changes we've made along the way, and that we continue to make. So it's just a, it's just an outstanding plan, it's, it's, it offers so much to everyone. May not be a lot to everyone, but there's something, there's at least something available, some activity that's available for each and every citizen we have in this.
Are, are there more public meetings planned?
As we keep moving along our, our various phases of design, we'll, we'll keep doing more, at least public presentation. To let everyone know where we're at in the process.
Because I think that will help too, to find out exactly what people are interested in.
So the next step would be to lock down on what our next.
The next step would be to lock down on what our next phase is gonna be, and, and, um, do a design contract accordingly.
Thanks.
Well, we have that, Pete, coupled with the CIP hearing that we'll be having, that we're starting on Saturday as well, 'cause that'll be in the capital improvement process.
Yes, it is.
The numbers that we used were from the capital improvement plan.
The master, a masterpiece in process, so.
God, I've heard this before.
Well, thank you all for your-
Well, Bob, we're here. We're gonna make it happen.
Thank you all for your-
I said the day I left, and they, they couldn't wait to get-
Well, guess what? You're not leaving.
Well, we're gonna make this happen, so you don't have to be bothered to come back again.
All right, citizen concerns. Now you can come up and tell.
Now, Chris, come on up.
You don't really have anything against basketball courts, though, do you?
I'd rather, I'd rather be able to park. If I'm going to a twenty million dollar park, I'd like to be able to park. You know, I'm not much younger than you guys. Um, my name's Christian Bowder. Um, you said, name my address too. Twenty-eight, twenty-seven, South Lemon. This camera really makes me look about fifty pounds bigger, but, um.
Would you like her to point it to somebody else?
Well, I noticed I have neck fat when I was sitting there, and I've never seen that, I've never seen that before. So I'm kinda like, don't feel so good about myself. In our society, we always wait till after someone passes before we recognize them. And, uh, the person I'm here, I would like the city to recognize and do a little, I don't know what you wanna call it. But he's been a, he's one of the greatest role models that, for business owners and non-business owners. He's done more for all forms of sports, for, from boys to girls, to college, to youth, to professional. From T-ball, baseball, football, soccer, softball, you name it, he has helped. No questions asked. He's involved with charities, Boys Club, Morningside College. This guy, he's the last person that would want recognition, but he's the most deserving person to deserve it, I guess.
Talking about, but go ahead.
You will know who I'm talking, you know who I'm talking about already. There's a road that leads from Pulaski Park, it's called Little League Boulevard. There's one address on that thing. I wanna make a motion, request, whatever you call it here, to rename that Bob Row Boulevard. It leads right to his restaurant there. And nobody in the history of CC will ever do more for this town in the name of sports or charitable contributions. I mean, there's other wealthier people that get their name on things or whatever. And the, and the family don't know I'm here, nobody knows I'm here. I'm here just because it's the right thing to do.
Chris, I, we've, we've been talking about this for quite a while, and I talked to, uh, Mr. Padmore, and we came up with an idea. Would you like to?
Go ahead.
Okay, so instead, what we, what we could do is put his name underneath the, um, Pulaski, what'd you say it was? Pulaski?
It's Pulaski.
Yeah, yeah. Put it underneath, underneath that, so there wouldn't be a, it wouldn't be a problem.
Do you know, is that an actual street?
Yeah, it's a, I just drove by Little League Drive. It says Little League Drive.
'Cause I'm not sure if it's an officially named street, and if it's not, then it's, it's simple, just changing the name.
I'll pay for it.
No, that, no.
I ain't got an issue with that. Who, um, I'm sorry, I, I've been in CC a long time, but who, who is Chris Larson?
He was a highway commissioner back in nineteen sixties with, that actually was instrumental in getting the interstate through. The com, you haven't been around long enough to remember when there wasn't an interstate there, like some of us were. And so, there was not an interstate. He was on the highway commission for years, and he was the guy that got the other commissioners to go for the funding to put the interstate along the riverfront.
I understand. Bob Row Park sounds a lot better, I'm just saying.
Is there parking?
Well, if you check, if you check, if you check the history, Chris Larson was-
Sure, I'm, I'm just being facetious, Bob.
I mean, cause we'll look into what, how informally it would, what would, what would it take to rename that section? I'm guessing-
You gotta check the zoning. I mean, you gotta check P and Z and see if it's even a dedicated street.
If not, then it would be an easy thing to change.
I think it'd be, and that's the least we could do. If you guys could think of something more, this man deserves it.
Well, we, I tell you what, we all know, we all know that for sure. Bob Row is, he's the icon of Sioux City when it comes to-
He's a role model to any business owner. I wish I could do half as much as that man does, you know?
Yeah, he's a, he's a wonderful man.
He's a hardworking guy.
Thanks for delivering the message to us.
Little League Boulevard, I think you said.
I don't know if it's public record, and he is, I'd just like to get something done as soon as possible. This is a time-sensitive matter, if you guys know what I'm saying.
Mm-hmm.
Yep, so, Mr. Padmore's in charge of that. He's, he's gonna get right on it, and then I'll get back to you as soon as I find out something. Okay?
Hey, this is very interesting. I wish I would've sat there and zipped my lips a little bit more. I'm sorry, I apologize.
See, this is what it's all about. We, we need to talk, and so, you gotta come here about every week.
All right, you guys would get sick pretty quick.
Oh, we had a couple other people-
We used to have Jerry Moore, my first tour duty, so we miss him.
Thank you for your time.
Yeah, thanks, Chris. I'll be talking to you.
I mean, this is, I'm the one.
Anyone else be heard? Okay, Mr. Gretkin? Um, the only thing I have left on my list is, I was just curious about the status of the, uh, old YMCA building. I drove by it over the weekend, and now there's graffiti on the east side of the building, along that north-south alley, really bad. I don't know what the gentleman that purchased that property has in mind, but, and I don't know what the status is, if maybe we could check with Daryl, and I, I know it. There must be some things, if nothing else, we could clean the place up a little bit, between all the trees and the graffiti.
I can report the graffiti. My understanding is no progress has been made with the person that purchased the building and made commitments. Very few were done, and now it's more or less been abandoned again.
Yeah, and it just looks like it's getting worse. And then there's, there's also that property in the night, Nebraska, west side of the street, those brick apartments that were there, ten, twelve of them. And I can't remember the people's names that, that had that, but that's just been left unattended forever as well, and, uh-
I'll, I'll follow up with Daryl when he gets it.
They went to work and did all that, and, and now they've got one garbage container that sits in the public right-of-way, and it's big enough for about you and me, that overflows every stinking week.
Yeah, yeah, I agree. I appreciate, thank you. That's all I have.
Um, I don't think I have much. Uh, maybe I'll remind everybody about next Monday. It's Martin Luther King.
Eleven o'clock.
Seven.
Oh, sev, yeah, that's the one at Mayflower Congregational Church.
Make sure we get the address correct. I think the Saturday Journal had an incorrect address for Mayflower.
Just off of Eighteenth and, um-
Fourteen oh seven West Eighteenth.
Rebecca? No.
Fourteen oh seven West Eighteenth Streets, the address of the actual church.
Okay, well, that's, it's, it fronts the other way, but okay, okay, yeah.
Mayflower Congregational, seven o'clock.
All I got.
I signed us all up for the choir, by the way.
I hope they gave you a solo.
He is a solo.
Are you singing in it?
I'm not this year. I would like to, yes. But I'll be there. I'm planning to attend. And we have no meeting a week from today. My, Alex left me a long list.
No, he has to do his own list, or we don't go into it.
Mr. Padmore could, uh, and I'll apologize ahead of time if I've missed the report, but could get a report from one Sioux land as far as what's happening? Benakon?
Yes.
You don't, you don't recall seeing one either, do you? Okay, good. Okay.
Get budget.
That's this Saturday, nine AM, CIP hearing.
Our books.
That's all I have.
Where's our budget book?
Could be one in your, uh, in your drawer down.
Back here.
That's where I picked mine up at.
I thought they were-
Oh, there they are.
All right, I have, I have one, a couple things. Number one, I, I'm, uh, kinda used to reading financial statements, and I really don't care about, I mean, I'm glad to get like Spectre's booking and Ken Says bookings and all that. Is it possible to get like a real financial statement that we could see how they're doing, based upon budget? Okay, I just think that, when they give those reports, that oughta be part of it, so we know what the heck is going on, so, um.
Still don't see many bookings.
Well, I don't, if they're not losing money, that's another thing, but, so.
How can you not lose money if you don't have bookings?
I don't know. Well, 'cause sometimes when you have bookings, you lose more money.
You know what, Bob, you're right.
Which for what you may not wanna have. I just wanna see actual financial statements that I can read.
A second, is that Heidi?
Hey, Bryn?
Hi.
Gretkin?
Hi.
Moore?
Hi.
Dot.
Hi.